November 21st, 2017 Planning Board Meeting is called to order. First order of business is approval of minutes from the October 17th, 2017 meeting. Are there any errors or omissions?
Make a motion.
Motion to approve. All right, do I have a second?
Gregor.
All right, Jim? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed, abstaining? We have one abstention. And we also have minutes from the November 7th, 2017 workshop. Any errors or omissions with this?
I have the motion to accept the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
And Jonathan seconds. All right, all those in favor? Opposed, one abstention. All right. I wasn't present, so, all right. The first order of business is 75 Ocean House Road. 75 Ocean House Road private road, private accessway, KTO LLC is requesting review of a proposed private road and private accessway to create frontage for a new lot to be located to the rear of 75 Ocean House Road. Section 19-7-9, private road, public hearing this evening. If the applicant would like to give an overview of the project, that would be great. You may I go ahead and add?
While Mr. Beagle is getting things ready, I just want to make sure people know that in the memo that I wrote, I referenced a water line. It's not a water line, it's an electrical line that needs the easement. And also I wanted to make sure people knew that the road maintenance agreement has been submitted by the applicant, signed, so the only thing left is for it to be recorded.
Good evening. My name is Peter Beagle. I'm with Land Design Solutions and have been retained by Kevin O'Donovan, the owner of the property, and the applicant to assist with this project. We, just a brief history of the project. We had a sketch plan meeting in August and a planning board meeting for completeness October 17th. We then had a site walk on October 23rd, and that brings us here to tonight. At the last planning board meeting, there were a number of questions and comments, desired plan changes, and I thought that I would run through those. The plan that you see up on the board has, I thought, it does not show very clearly. I highlighted the various changes. First thing that we talked about was we talked about boulders around the no disturb line to demarcate that in kind of a natural way. We now show those on the plan. There are four of them, and I think if you can see that label right there, there's boulder, 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 and boulder. So there are those four boulders along that line. We also had talked about the very poorly drained soils and the science and methodology behind determining where that line was. We had our soil scientist, Mark Hampton, he did go back out to that parcel, and we did put together a high intensity, a Class A high intensity soil survey, which was submitted with the packet, and we completed on the plan. You will see, it's actually on the next, I'll point it out when we get to the next plan slide, but it is now shown on that plan. We talked about making the whole road, right now, originally we went from a private accessway and the gravel and pavement buildup required for that to the private road, which was a different buildup, and we have gone the whole distance with the thing as built to private road standards. So it's all 18 feet wide. We have the appropriate gravel for a private road, and we have the pavement for a private road. So the whole way is a private road, which would allow a lot in the future to be built potentially over on this side of the road and connect to that. So there would be no need for road upgrades should that ever happen in the future. We also talked about running the forced main sewer line down the road and stubbing it out at the end for a possible future connection. So we have done that as well. We approached the town police chief about the road name of Edgecombe Way. There was no problem with that, so we have scrapped the Bella's Way thought and have proposed and been accepted as Edgecombe Way. We are proposing a 12-foot wide easement along this line from our talk with CMP who met with Kevin out there on site and said the best way to serve this lot is with a service line, which is only a couple of feet deep, down the easement from that utility pole right there. So that's what we're proposing. In discussion with the Public Works, there was a question of what to do with that big beech tree and monumenting the corner of the lot. We have added that note on the plan right there that talks about should that tree ever die or need to be removed for whatever reason, a monument will go in that location. Comment was made that it'd be, I'd like to see the surveyor notes and references on this plan, and they are now located in that bottom left corner. We reviewed the staff comments and the peer reviewers' comments for this project, and we have no issues. There's nothing we can't work out with either of those folks. We don't take any exceptions to those items. We've asked for three waivers. The first waiver was we have a 35-foot right-of-way, and we would like a waiver to reduce the width from 50 feet that the ordinance talks about to the 35. The width of our paved private road, we are asking to be waived, reduced from 22 feet to 18 feet, which we did talk about with the fire department, and that they did say that they did not have a problem with that. And then we have, the third waiver is the distance between intersection separations. And up here, we have the Canterbury project, and that is approximately 116 feet away from our entrance, and the ordinance talks about that being, should be 125 feet. So I believe we need a waiver for that also. One of staff's, staff picked up that when we changed this all to just a private road, that was a, be a problem for road frontage. So we are asking that we be approved for a private road and private accessway, even though we aren't, even though, I guess maybe we have a private accessway, but it's all being built to private road standards, so that the lot that we're proposing this lot to back here would, does not, it's not required to have frontage. And I will move to the next, the next plan.
Can I ask a quick question while you're still on this page? So would the private accessway be the area? Is it a specific area or is it applied to the whole road?
It could, it can only apply to this section because we have, because you can't have three lots utilizing it without it being a private road. So should another lot be built back here, then I believe this next, whatever was built onto here would be a private accessway, and we could be, then we could be called either a private accessway or a private road. I think it would make no difference. It's all being built to the same standard. I think we'd just run into a problem if we call it a private road.
Would you like Maureen to jump in and clarify?
Yeah, that would be, that would be very helpful.
No, does anybody else need me to jump in? Well, we did ask the applicant to take his existing private accessway and upgrade it to a private road. The board is okay with that, but if you could think of, you're granting a private accessway permit for the area of proposed road that's adjacent to the lot. And the reason we had to do that is when you get a private accessway, you're not trying to create the amount of frontage you need. It's like getting a, getting a, getting a, get a jail free card. You do the private accessway instead of providing frontage. When you have a private road, you still need to have the frontage that is required in the ordinance. So this lot is at, I think I added it, it was like 77 feet, and it needs 100 feet on the private road.
But is there, I mean, is there a point where specifically this is the right of? No?
Good. All right.
Okay. I did just switch my slide, and so now you can faintly see kind of a brownish line, which is the new peachum soil that has it closed on both, both ends and labeled peachum. And those are, those are our updates since our last meeting and site walk. Those were the waivers that we are hoping we could be approved for.
You all set?
I'm all set.
At this time, I'd like to open this project for public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this particular item?
My name is Jonathan Clark. My wife Patty and I live at 73 Ocean House Road. We are the abutting property and the owners of this right-of-way that's being developed so that Kevin can have his lot in the back there. And I appreciate all the work that Kevin has done to salvage the property at 75. He's put blood, sweat, and tears into it in a project that many people, by almost universal opinion, would have written it off as a total demolition project. But I would like the committee to bear in mind that everything that is being built and approved for is being built on the back of our land. We'll still have to pay the taxes on that land, that right-of-way, that road, and it was never part of our thinking originally that there might be another developable lot in the back of our land. That may or may not be something we want to approach in the future. But the development of this whole scenario, I would still have to say that, you know, it's going to be something we'll be seeing out of our back windows, out of our bedroom windows, out of our house windows from now forward, if given to the point whenever it gets created. So I want the committee to be fully aware that this whole development takes a major chunk out of our backyard, something that we've been enjoying peace and privacy in for decades since we bought the property in 1975. The simple agreement that was established perhaps back in the 20s and 30s to have a shared driveway between our place and the Foster's place, where we shared plowing and shared driveway maintenance for many years. If this is now going to become a private road, then I appreciate that Kevin is taking over all the maintenance of it. I think that's a good thing. But it's still our land, our property, and we're going to have to live with it and live with all the changes that go about it. We sent an email requesting you consider the value of the trees that will have to be taken down on that land, back of the wooded area. There's a lot of large old timber there, and a number of them will have to come down. We've made suggestions as to how they should be utilized, and hope you'll take that into And overall, I appreciate all your help and consideration in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this project? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this up to the board for questions. Go ahead, Victoria.
Do you have timing when you think you might be building this?
No.
Timing issue? Okay.
What was the question again? I couldn't hear you.
A timing, when they think they might be building. Then I'm going to throw out something kind of crazy. The Clarks have written a number of emails to us, and I do recall one saying that they would lose some vegetation if this road goes in prior to, I believe it was mid-June. Is this, could we put something in there that says you would time this after June? I'm just, it's craziness, but if you don't have anything scheduled, I'm just going to throw it out to you.
Well, Kevin's trying to sell the front house, and obviously he's been trying to get this approved so that we can put the power in through the easement, and then everything would be cleaned up and undisturbed. But I don't know that he was wanting to lock himself into if somebody wanted to buy the front and the back, or just, you know, what's, trying to leave open to all those different scenarios.
Okay. I guess I was, there's nothing that I can compel you to do, it's not in the ordinance, but I'm just throwing that out that maybe you could keep that in mind?
Certainly.
Another item is, we did receive, and I'm not sure if you saw the latest email from the Clarks in regards to the value of the trees.
Yes, we did.
Did you happen to see that? What are your comments on his two items that he mentioned in the email?
Well, I guess the first one is not really knowing the timing of construction, if it will be Kevin that's actually the one who develops that lot, or what happens. The, I guess the less things that we're tied to that we have to try to pass on to somebody else, the better, as far as, you know, the wood. I don't, I don't know that that's, you know, would be a big issue if we could make, try to make that happen and not, and it wasn't too confusing in trying to hand that over to somebody else of how that all works. Like we said, we don't have the construction that worked out, don't even know if we would be doing the construction. If the Clarks wanted to take those down now or any time and give, I mean, we're not, we're not trying to preserve those. Anybody could take those down.
You would keep it in mind then?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we certainly would. And I guess I don't, I think those are pine trees. Are those big pines?
It's a mix.
Mix. By just not knowing if, you know, for firewood anyway, if they accept pine just from pitch.
Just trying to, you guys are working so well together.
But we certainly, yes, we certainly would be, we certainly would keep that in mind.
And the second item, he didn't mention it, but something about constructing the road, and I forget, does anyone have that memo?
It's the paving of the drive, the driveway, their park, well, their parking area right here.
I can't, I forgot my memo at home, and I don't have a computer.
Yeah, but that's the driveway that we're, I think that is in question.
And he recalled the question that he thought asked?
Yes.
And can you respond to that?
Well, again, not knowing if we're doing that construction. I think if we, we would be glad to consider that. We did just get the memo today, so we haven't really worked that out. We were hoping that we have done enough other things to try to make things a little bit palatable for the Clarks. So again, we'd be glad to consider that.
Okay. As you know, there's nothing in the ordinance, but I understand the impact, I understand the rights, Mr. Clark, and I'm just trying to see if we can continue these conversations between the two of you, so.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
I appreciate your answer so that Mr. Clark could have his answer too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else got any questions, comments?
Just one thing. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so most, and I didn't get a chance to go to the site walk, so I'm most likely going to be abstaining from voting on this. But more legally speaking, this, as Mr. Clark mentioned, this is an easement over his property to this back, proposed back lot. That's been looked into, and the town has verified that they, the applicant does have legal standing to do what is suggested, and that's all been discussed.
Yes, our attorney, the applicant's attorney provided documentation to our attorney. Our attorney reviewed it and completely concurred that there are complete legal rights to build a right-of-way in this, this 35-foot right-of-way to access the land behind 75 Ocean House Road.
And we did receive an email from the Clarks today, and I did appreciate reading that, and it does sound like the two parties are working well together, and hopefully, as Victoria said, that continues.
Anything else?
I have one very nitpicky thing.
Okay, go for it.
I'd like to add like a couple more boulders. Seems like those are pretty far apart. No?
I'm open. I can visualize with that, Lisa, I'm open to?
Well, they're about, that's 20 feet, I don't know, they're about 60.
Yeah, well, I put them on the points so that you kind of go directly from one point to the next, and I think they are approximately that 40, maybe 40 feet, 45 feet.
So I think the last time that we saw these on a project, they were spaced quite a bit closer together. I can't remember which one.
Well, we certainly could put another one in the middle here and another one in the middle here if that would, that would help. Those two seem to be pretty close.
Yeah, I'm just seeing if you put one in the middle of each of those two boulders.
I think it was Dr. Holt's property recently.
Okay.
I would support that, if anyone else.
Any improvement on the barrier to avoid situations?
We don't have any issue with that. We can include those.
Fine. Change the line.
I have a question, and you are okay with the suggestion or the consideration, no one else on the board has brought it up, requiring that a setback of 10 feet from the edge of the?
Yes.
Of the do not disturb line?
Yes.
So that note will be added to the plan?
Yes.
All right, anything else? Would someone like to make a motion? Go ahead. Joe, Mike?
Motion for the board to consider. Finding of fact, KTO LLC Kevin O'Donovan is requesting the approval of Edgecombe Way, a private road and a private accessway permit to provide access to a new lot located at the rear of 75 Ocean House Road, which requires review under Section 16-2-3 of the subdivision ordinance. Two, Edgecombe Way will not result in undue water pollution. The subdivision is not located in the 100-year flood plain. Soils will support the proposed uses. The slope of the land, proximity to streams, and state and local water resource rules and regulations will not be compromised by the project. Edgecombe Way will not cause soil erosion based on the erosion control plan provided. Four, Edgecombe Way will not cause unreasonable road congestion or unsafe vehicular and pedestrian traffic. It provides for road network connectivity to Ocean House Road and eliminating through traffic because it is a dead end. Edgecombe Road is laid out to conform to existing topography as much as is feasible. The proposed Lot 2 is provided with vehicular access. Edgecombe Road is designed to meet town standards, except that the existing road right-of-way is 35 feet wide. Five, Edgecombe Way will include a forced main connection to public sewer. Six, Edgecombe Way will not have an undue adverse impact on scenic or natural areas, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat, rare natural areas, or public access to the shoreline. Seven, Edgecombe Way is compatible with applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan and town ordinances. Eight, the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capability to complete the project. Nine, Edgecombe Way will not adversely impact surface water quality. Ten, Edgecombe Way will not adversely impact the quality or quantity of groundwater. Eleven, Edgecombe Way is in compliance with the town wetland regulations and the zoning ordinance. Twelve, the design of Edgecombe Way will provide for adequate stormwater management. Thirteen, Lot 2 will be provided with access to utilities. Fourteen, the applicant has substantially addressed the standards of the subdivision ordinance, Section 16-3-1. Fifteen, the project complies with the private accessway standard, Section 19-7-9. Should we add one more that says the project complies with private roadway standards? Or did I say that?
The private roadway standards are under the subdivision ordinance, so 1 through 14 was the subdivision ordinance standard.
Okay. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of KTO LLC Kevin O'Donovan for private road to be named Edgecombe Way and a private accessway permit to provide access to a new lot located at the rear of 75 Ocean House Road be approved subject to the following conditions. One, that the plans be revised to address the recommendations in the town engineer's letter dated November 15th, 2017. Two, that there be no issuance of a building permit for a building within 10 feet of the do not disturb line on Lot 2. Three, that a road maintenance agreement be submitted in a form acceptable to the town attorney, signed by the applicant and recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds. Four, that an easement be submitted in a form acceptable to the town attorney that conveys rights for Lot 2 on Lot 1 for the turnaround driveway and water line. Five, that a note be added to the plan that there shall be no road construction until a performance guarantee has been provided to the town in accordance with Section 16-2-6 of the subdivision ordinance. And six, that the plans be revised and submitted to the town planner for review and approval prior to recording the subdivision plan. And can I add my boulders here?
I wrote something up.
Okay.
You should add the boulders, and it should be five and a half.
All right.
Five and a half.
You want to try?
Yeah. That the note on the plans be amended to show the placement of six large boulders along the do not disturb boundary.
I just wanted to make a comment on condition number four, where it says water line, it should be electrical line.
Oh, okay. Oh, you said that.
Oh, that was the correction, yes.
Okay, Victoria seconds. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed, abstaining, one abstention. All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the Baylen-Morris Resource Protection Permit. Ronald Baylen and Patricia Morris are requesting an after-the-fact resource protection permit to alter fifteen hundred and fifty-seven square feet of RP2 wetland for drainage and lawn area located at Twenty-Six Hundredfoot Cove Road, Section nine dash eight dash three, Resource Protection Permit. And we will be discussing completeness this evening. Do you like to... You're not ready, Bob.
My finger's not working fast enough. There we go. Sorry. Bob McTafford Mitchell and Associates here, representing Ron Baylen and Patty Morris. We met with the Board last time to discuss the application. The Morris has bought this property from a prior owner who had made some impacts to RP2 wetland when they constructed their home. And what brought us back to the Board was the, it put, the prior owner had put in a perforated underdrain that defined the area between the fenced-in yard, I'm not sure how well it's reading on here, but basically this section here, there's an existing fence that actually comes out around the side, and there's another section over here. The, what looks like kind of a yellow highlighted area, which I think comes out as red, is the area that was defined by Albert Frick Associates as the impacted area of RP2 wetland. And I'll step back a little bit. Al's office had actually done the RP2 delineation for the prior property owner who built the home. And we retained Al to go back out to try and define where the limits of the RP2 line limits were prior to development of the site, as well as showing what the confines of the outer edge of the RP2 wetland that is undisturbed. The area that's highlighted is the one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven square feet of actual filled impacted wetland, where the perforated underdrain is located, actually falls within the lawn area. And that, when Al's office went out and did the delineation, and it doesn't really show very well in here, I'll get to it in the next plan, is that pipe actually falls within the lawn area, but the lawn area meets the criteria of hydrology and hydroic soils to classify it still as a wetland area. And then there's the area further to this edge that actually is undisturbed portion of the RP2 wetland before the site actually climbs back up and is a ridge that runs along this section in here. So the actual delineation of the wetland and field work and test pits were done within the confines of the fenced-in yard. The area here and the area upstream were taken off the town's GIS RP2 wetland information. So these are the existing conditions in the backyard. One of the comments in Maureen's letter was that we had not shown where the hot tub was. Our plan is divided into two sheets, where we have the top with existing conditions, and the bottom sheet has what was being proposed, the replacement of the underdrain. The existing conditions plan did identify where the hot tub is, which is on a poured concrete patio, which you can see here, that was constructed over a concrete paver patio that was installed by the prior owner. A portion of that patio area was subsequently removed when the hot tub was installed. This one here, which is not very clear due to color, I'm not sure why, that's a portion of the underdrain pipe that's exposed. It varies as it goes through. It's a pipe that I've never experienced in thirty-some odd years of practice. It appears, the best way I can describe it is if you think of a dryer hose in terms of the wire internal framework, that's what the fabric goes around, and that pipe is actually filled with debris, and in some places the fabric is torn. So it kind of goes along with one of the comments that Mr. Harding made that I'll go through later on. So the underdrain runs roughly along this edge here, which is part of the mowed area. This is all herbaceous, and there's some woody wetland vegetation, and then some of the larger trees that come in along the back edge of the defined wetland area. So basically, what we're looking at is to install a new line where the existing line is, and basically restoring it back to the lawn condition that it's in right now. So I know there was some confusion in terms of just how much wetland impact we're looking at. The after-the-fact is for the permanently filled area that was associated with the construction of the house. The underdrain actually falls within what Al has defined as a wetland condition, which has been mowed since the prior owner had the property. So on the, our site plan, this is showing where the existing hot tub is. This defines the area in terms of what permanent fill was put in as part of the construction of the house, partly backfilling in around the foundation, because the whole site drops back down at the low point in here, and then actually rises back up to a ridge line up in here. This is the beginning where the pipe starts, the fence in here, and then it daylights out on this end in here. On this end, it was difficult to find it, there's so much vegetation that's grown in there and some sediment buildup, so we haven't been able to identify the actual outlet itself, but we know where it drops off on this end of the property. So what we're proposing, as I said, to do is to take and pretty much follow the same alignment as the existing line and replace that with a four-inch line. I'm afraid a riprap headwall in here, up in this area, what was put in was a combination of some cement blocks, some rock, and it looked like an old barbecue grill. The grate that was put in there is a grid on that side, as again, the site is all over ground. So we'd be looking at putting a riprap headwall in where the pipe would come through, and then we'd be doing the same thing on the outlet end to protect both the inlet and the outlet sections. In terms of some of the comments that Mr. Harding had made, when we made the proposal to replace the four-inch line, we were pretty much saying we were just going to replace it with what was installed previously. We concur with Mr. Harding that a larger pipe would make more sense, but we were basically looking at as a replacement for what was in there. Going up to a six- or an eight-inch line, I think, would be very compatible in the same type of installation we were talking about in terms of it would be trench to be a pipe wrapped in, embedded in crushed stone, it would be wrapped in filter fabric, and then the top four-inch layer over that would be a coarse sand layer that would allow infiltration from above, and basically the lawn area, we re-vegetate that area after a short period of time. The comments in regard to the area where we've talked about moss, there's a section down in here that is not lawn, but it's actually wetland area that is moss-covered, and what we talked about is going in actually like you would cut sod, is to go in and take the top surface off, set that aside, keep it moist, and then they can come in, install the pipe, and then reset it back the same day. So they're basically restoring it back to the same condition. And I know Steve had asked for a little more detailed information for the contractor so he knew exactly what to do, and that wouldn't be a problem. So we'd basically be restoring that to the same moss-type condition, so. And Steve had raised the question regarding DEP and Army Corps of Engineers. Tried to reach Army Corps of Engineers, but they're sort of short-staffed in that office, it's difficult to get a hold of someone. But I did reach Bob Maureen at DEP, and actually, he provided me. I sent him the plans to review. We spoke this morning, and he sent me an email, which I can give you a copy of his response. Basically said if there's no more permanent impact, and it's just a replacement of what's in there, that the DEP would not require a permit. And I can pass this out, see if I have it in the records. Will continue to pursue trying to get a hold of Army Corps to get any answer from them. We'll re... I'm fighting off the tail end of a cold, so my voice may be fading out on me, sorry. But we'll try and get a hold of Army Corps to find out whether or not they would have any issues with this. But DEP, when I talked with them, they tended to think that Army Corps wouldn't have an issue with this, as long since they didn't have an issue with it. But I can't go on their word. I will reach out to Army Corps to verify that. Think that covers most of the items in terms of what's existing conditions and what's being proposed to do for the replacement of the pipe. Happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Joe.
So I have a couple of questions. One is, what would happen if nothing is done? And then, I guess, my other question is, is this being done to preserve this as a area that can be used, or is it done to ward off structural damage to the house?
There's concerns with potential structural damage to the house. The porch area, the deck area, there had been some undermining over there, and it was just more of a concern as the water was building up in the backyard at different times during heavier rain events, that that was a concern they had. There is a, I know you had asked about a foundation drain when we had the workshop session, and there is a four-inch line that comes off of this end of the corner of the house itself. And that's the only...
An underdrain?
An underdrain, a foundation drain. That's the only place I was able to find any sort of underdrain that was coming off around the building itself. So really, this area in here is where it really gets pretty damp. I mean, I've been out there a number of times since June, and even when we were going through that dry spell this summer, it was still pretty soft in those areas, so that it's really more of a concern, not wanting to have anything that's going back up and have any impact on that foundation. And again, the whole site drops down into this backyard, so. And it's basically maintaining what was there. Unfortunately, the pipe that was installed probably wasn't the proper one to be put in, regardless. They're trying to improve that to help with the area. That's a twofold request.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Peter.
Bob, you referred to the comment by the engineer, the town engineer, that the four-inch underdrain didn't seem adequate to do the job, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your response. Would you agree that a larger drain...
Yeah, we concur with Steve on that, as I indicated, because it was just looking at a direct replacement of what was in there, is why we proposed to replace the four-inch underdrain, where there was an after-the-fact impact. So we wanted to coincide with that. We initially thought that an eight-inch line would probably be a better line to put in there, anyway, and where Steve made the comment that he feels a larger pipe would be, we would concur with that, and feel so, at least an eight-inch line, and then doing the grate on the up-end side to prevent any sediment and debris from going into the pipe.
Safe to say, though, that if you used an eight-inch line, that the, pardon me, the disruption and the restoration would be virtually the same?
Pretty much the same. Trench might wind up being a couple of inches wider in order to do it, but for the most part, it'd be the same limited amount of impact that would occur. And again, it would be temporary in the sense that, you know, make sure they're limited to just enough, and it's not going to be that deep, so it isn't like they're installing a major water line or anything, they're going down five feet, we're probably only going down. If I go to a larger pipe, we're probably looking at probably about an eighteen-inch depth excavation in order to get the fabric, the stone base, the pipe bedded, and then put the sand filter on top, so.
Thank you.
So do we have any questions on completeness of the package?
No, I think mine's beyond. It's the engineers' notes.
At this time, I'll open this up to a public hearing on completeness of the submission. And something I forgot to mention in the first public hearing is, you come forward, please state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this project? Don't sit down, Bob. I look at, seeing no one, closed public comment period, and, all right, now we can get into the nuts and bolts from the board.
Can I ask one more question, actually, on completeness? What are we to, and this is for Maureen, what are we to do with the Conservation Commission's recommendation?
I think that's our next question for Bob.
Okay.
They're an advisory group, so you can take their advice, or you can read their advice. So what I would like to hear is Bob's response to their comment. One of the things we discussed was removal, or re, excuse me, restoration.
Well, I guess I'm going to confess that I've gone through the pack that was mailed to me, and I don't see a copy of anything from the conservation.
Oh, I'm sorry. It came as a, it came as a separate email.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't in the, it wasn't in the original pack. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I thought you had seen it.
No, I had not seen it.
Carolyn, could you summarize what the conservation email is all about?
The Conservation Commission reviewed this project, and they are seeing no proposal in this package for restoration of some of the filled wetland, and...
In terms of the permanently filled wetland area, which is this section up in here, it's really attributable to the fill that was put in to secure around the back of the house or along the foundation. And as I said in our, during the workshop session, to remove all that material would create an adverse grade on that side in order to try and restore a wetland condition on that slope. The area where the underdrain is, as I indicated earlier, Al has delineated, defined that, even though it's a lawn area, and where the pipe falls, it meets the hydroic and hydrology conditions and the vegetation. You can go into an open field, it's been farmed field for years, and mowed or hayed or what have you, and it'll still have a wetland condition in it. So the grass vegetation that's growing there sustains itself within a wetland condition. So that's why he's identified that still as an RP2 wetland area. It's got the hydroic soils, and it has the hydrology. The only thing is the vegetation, and there would be nothing to retain on that unless we're going to take the entire backyard away from the property itself and allow wetland vegetation to take over the entire yard, which...
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for responding.
At least it wasn't that long.
No, it wasn't. It's pretty short, no. All right. Victoria, Ralph, should we...
Well, it has to do with the town engineer's letter, so is that beyond completeness, or would that fall into completeness? Where would that fall in the engineer's letter?
Are you asking for information, or do you want to discuss the substance of his comments?
I guess it would be the substance of the comments, so I'm thinking it does go beyond completeness.
So shall we, we deal with completeness and then have further discussion?
I have a motion for completeness.
Okay.
All right. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Ronald Baylen and Patricia Morris for an after-the-fact resource protection permit for one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven square feet of fill and an RP2 wetland for landscaping, and additional two hundred and seventy-five square feet of temporary alteration to replace drainage pipe located at Twenty-Six Hundredfoot Road be deemed complete and include granting the following waivers of information. Waiver of topography, or, excuse me, topographic contours of one foot, and instead providing contour information at two-foot intervals. Waiver of a written description and map of wetland vegetation cover, and instead providing wetland soils information. Waiver of a higher, excuse me, a high-intensity soil survey, and instead a wetland soils report prepared by a soil scientist licensed in the state of Maine. Waiver of a stormwater runoff plan prepared by a professional engineer. So be it... Yeah. That's my motion.
Have a second? Henry Secants. All right. Any more discussion on completeness? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? So now we can go on to the nuts and bolts, and whether we want to have, think about whether we want to have a sidewalk?
No, I think we should have a sidewalk.
Okay. So, go ahead, we can schedule a sidewalk after you go to your questions.
Well, so I'm going back to the town engineer's letter, and I'm looking at question three. And...
And he's saying, "We question whether the replacement of the existing underdrain with a new underdrain is even necessary." He's saying the solution could be simply to uncover it, flush it out, and then, you know, the riprap and how to. What are your thoughts on that suggestion?
As I stated, the pipe that has been installed, I have never ever seen in my thirty-seven-odd years of practice. It looks like a dryer hose in terms of the wire support structure with the fabric over the top, and that is deteriorating and failing, and to flush that line out, we would probably just wind up destroying the entire piece of pipe, if you want to call it pipe. So, if it were a solid pipe wrapped, I would say yes, that would probably be a possible solution to try, but because of the nature of the pipe, I could not say that I would recommend that, and I think if Steve saw the pipe itself, he would probably concur with me as well.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
If installing a bigger pipe is going to keep the planning board another 20 years from doing this again, I'm all in favor of it.
Bigger pipe will work, definitely.
Yeah, I don't know, but what the others think, eight-inch, 10-inch, 12-inch, doesn't bother me, you're going to dig it up anyway, right?
Well, I wouldn't go to a 12-inch, that's an excessive size of pipe, I think, I think we should turn it six and an eight. That way, it helps to minimize the amount of impact, as well as, you know, as Peter was saying, just how much more disturbance would there be, maybe a couple of inches wider in terms of the width of the trench to make it happen, so.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else has a thought on that. I don't know if this is the proper time to even talk about it.
This is the time.
Yeah, this kind of straddles the issue of completeness, really, and is what they're proposing to do, something that we're going to take on its face, in which case they have the information, but if we're going to decide it's not, then you're almost back into a design phase, which, so I side with Jim on the result, I think the, this is the right time to talk about this.
Go ahead, Jim.
One other thing, this is my first experience with an application for an after-the-fact resource protection permit, and it's one of those sort of things that I feel like the applicant here is almost a victim of the prior owner, who did this in almost a fly-by-night operation. So I feel for the applicant, but at the same time, I don't want to set the precedent that owners can go out, do whatever they want, sell the property, and then the next owner sort of gets past. But that said, it's, I would like to see something from the applicant that sort of solidifies that they weren't made aware of this situation. From my understanding from the workshop, they actually took it upon themselves, once they went to a contractor to find out how to get this replaced, and it was the contractor that told them to come to the town, and they did the right thing by coming to the town to have this done, as opposed to the previous owner, who just seems like they did whatever they wanted. So I'm not sure if, my sort of legal background's getting too much on this, but some sort of affidavit that the owners didn't understand and did not know that this was the, this did happen by the previous owner, and that would make it sort of easier for me to accept an after-the-fact resource protection permit. So it's sort of, I don't know if it's within the ordinance that we need to do that, but like I said, this is something that I feel for the owners of the property who bought into this and almost are victims of what the prior owner had done, so.
Understood. We'll try, we'll work that out.
Anything else?
I couldn't hear.
Anything else? No. I'm with you guys, if you're going to dig it up anyway, do the best job possible, so it doesn't have to be done again in another 10 years. So, site walk? When? It gets dark early now.
It gets late, late.
Saturday?
This Saturday, I'm going.
Not this, not this Saturday. December 2nd? That's a week from-
A week from Saturday, December 2nd?
D-Day?
No, that's the 7th.
That's actually-
So, the 2nd.
D-Day's in June.
What time?
I can't, I can't make either, it's, it don't matter all day. I can't make it on Saturday except the 2nd either.
Sunday.
But if I'm the only one, go ahead.
Do you want to do it early in the morning on weekday?
I'm looking at you guys, my schedule's wide, opened up considerably.
I can't do an early morning one unless you want to do it Thursday.
Everyone should go for a walk before Thanksgiving dinner, right?
Could a 7:30 in the morning, weekday morning, would that work?
I can do that.
For people who work?
Except for Victoria, she just said that doesn't work.
Oh, it doesn't work yet?
No, I'm sorry, just, I can't make an early morning. I can do the weekends.
Sunday?
Sunday, December 3rd. It's fine with me.
I can do that.
Can you do that?
Yep.
Right, how early do you want to do it?
Early.
What, excuse me, what day did you say?
Sunday, December 3rd.
December 3rd?
7:30.
7:30?
Works for me. Churches are bad.
7:30 is late.
7:30? 7:30, Sunday, December 3rd.
Okay.
I'm not psyched about that. Henry, you're not psyched about that, right?
Overruled, there's too many of them.
Carol, can I just have one conference reply?
Yep, go right ahead.
Do you want to move it back?
Why, sorry.
That's-
I got stuff.
Victoria, will 8:30 be all right?
8:30 would be better.
Can everybody else live at 8:30?
8:30?
8:30.
8:30?
8:30?
Might be lighter than two.
Yeah, I don't think there's much light, I assume.
7:30 works fine for me.
How about 8:30?
How about 8:30?
I guess I better find ushers for church. Sure, I can do 8:30.
All right, 8:30, Sunday, December 3rd. You'll convene at 26 Hanford Cove Road.
Yep.
Okay. Can I have another motion?
Motion tabled. Be it ordered that based on the plans, materials submitted, and the facts presented, the application of Ronald Baylin and Patricia Morris for an after-the-fact resource protection permit for 1,557 square feet of fill, and an RP2 wetland for landscaping, and additional 275 square foot, square feet of temporary alteration to replace drainage pipe located at 26 Hanford Cove Road be tabled to the regular December 19, 2017 meeting of the planning board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Do I have a second? Do you have seconds? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, no one? All right, we're good. Thank you, Bob. Well, for the moment.
Yeah, Maureen, I'm going to need you out here. You were missing it on the street, and I can't close this line.
I'll read slowly. Next item on the agenda is Holt's Second Berry subdivision amendment. William Holt is requesting a second amendment to the Berry subdivision lot located at 31 Hanford Cove Road to convey 1.09 acres to a butter. Section 16-2-5 amendments to previously approved subdivision, and tonight we'll be discussing completeness, and we will have a public hearing.
I got to need Maureen's assistance, because the only reason I can't shut this or close this before I can open the other.
I didn't read slowly, and I'm sorry.
Again, Bob McCaffrey, Mitchell and Associates, representing Dr. Holt's on the second amendment to the Berry subdivision. Dr. Holt had been here to receive an amendment to the Berry subdivision to take a parcel on Hanford Cove Road, and included with his larger parcel on the back where his vineyard is. Since that approval, Mr. Holt has been building his house. The butter, Mr. Egan, has approached him to obtain some additional land on the backside of his parcels in order to increase and or enhance the buffer between his property and Dr. Holt's. And what I've shown on here, this is the area, it's 1.09 acres, it runs the full length of, or width, I should say, of Mr. Egan's property. The last time we were here, there were issues raised in terms of Mr. Egan's property, the prior subdivision plan, it's basically taken the information that was provided, that had shown three parcels, which are rather difficult to see on here, that Mr. Egan owns. There was one lot here, a lot here, and then there was a flag that went up to access a real lot. We provided information to the board, Mr. Egan had consolidated to create one lot. This flag area in here, he basically ran it all the way to the back property and conveyed that to the butter, Yoko Bakus, Bakus, and then created this as just one lot, so that what shows now on the town tax map is this one parcel. I know in Maureen's letter, and we were going back and forth in terms of the potential of what could happen to Mr. Egan's property, especially with the addition of the 1.09 acres. We went back and forth. When we met with the board at the workshop session, we discussed having a note. We did add note number 15 to the plan, which basically says, "Future proposed division of tax map U14 Lot 1, as amended now formally, Thomas M. Egan, shall require a planning board approval." So that was a note that we had come up with, discussed with Maureen. Mr. Egan's attorney reviewed that, he was fine with that, Bill had reviewed it, as well as Bill's attorney, and that seemed to be a note that we hoped would satisfy at least concerns on the subdivision plan itself that would require any change in the layout of the Egan property, would have to come back to the board first. It does not really change, while it's 1.09 acres, it comes out of the Dr. Holt's existing property, it does not make it a non-conforming lot, it exceeds the amount of lot area required for the lot, there's no other changes in terms of access or use, it's just a straight-out conveyance of the property to Mr. Egan. So, happy to answer, any questions you may have?
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment regarding completeness of this submission. Would anyone like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll turn it over to the board for any questions from the board regarding completeness of the project, of the submission, excuse me. Are there any questions? It's pretty clear cut. All right. Would anyone like to make a motion on completeness?
I've got a motion for the board to consider.
Thank you.
Motion for completeness. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of William Holt, 31 Hanford Cove Road, for an amendment to a previously approved subdivision to alter lot lines in order to convey 1.09 acres of land to a butter, Tom Egan. 41 Hanford Cove Road be deemed complete with the following waivers granted. Waiver from submitting evidence of financial capability.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Joe, seconds. Any discussion? All right, okay. All those in favor? Opposed? We're unanimous? All right, so now-
Motion for approval?
No.
No?
We're going to open this up to a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, by the way.
Public hearing on this. Would anyone like to speak on this project? On anything about this project? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. All right, board, what, does anyone here have any questions regarding this, or any comments? Okay. Now, go ahead, Jim.
Knock them out. Okay, William Holt, 31 Hanford Cove Road, has a motion for approval. William Holt, 31 Hanford Cove Road, is requesting an amendment to a previously approved subdivision to alter lot lines in order to convey 1.09 acres of land to a butter, Tom Egan, 41 Hanford Cove Road, which requires review for compliance with Section 16-2-5 amendments to previously approved subdivisions. Two, the planning board has previously found that the subdivision complies with the standards of Section 16-3-1. Three, their proposed land conveyance also complies with the standards of Section 16-3-1. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of William Holt, 31 Hanford Cove Road, for an amendment to a previously approved subdivision to alter lot lines in order to convey 1.09 acres of land to a butter, Tom Egan, 41 Hanford Cove Road, be approved with the following conditions. One, that a full-size subdivision plan suitable for recording be stamped by a land surveyor licensed in the state of Maine and provided to the town.
Second? Henry seconds. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I will turn the meeting over to the chairman.
19 Wells Road telecommunications tower. Global signal acquisition for LLC Crown Castle is requesting site plan review and a resource protection permit to construct a 180-foot-tall telecommunications tower to be constructed at 19 Wells Road, R5-30. Section 19-9 site completeness, and Section 19-8-3, resource protection permit completeness. Before we begin, I'm going to recognize Maureen to discuss the resource protection permit.
Yes, so I just wanted to make sure the board was aware, I provided you with some documentation for the meeting tonight. When this applicant originally appeared before the planning board, it was for a rezoning to create the tower overlay district at 19 Wells Road. As part of that rezoning request, they did submit plans that showed wetland mapping. And there was discussions between myself and the code enforcement officer, and the planning board, and the applicant, that the access for the tower would be on an existing farm road that we knew was in an RP1 wetland buffer. And under Section 1963, I believe, it does list that you can rebuild an existing road in a wetland buffer, as long as you get a permit from the planning board, a resource protection permit. I failed to counsel the applicant that when they applied for site plan review for their tower, they should have also concurrently provided an application for a resource protection permit. So I contacted them yesterday, and what you have in front of you is a resource protection permit completeness checklist, as well as amended motions that include the resource protection permit in the site plan motions. If there's any questions on that, please let me know. We also posted an amended agenda for tonight's meeting yesterday that included the resource protection permit in the original application for the site plan review. So if there are any questions, just let me know. How are we doing over there?
Oh, it started fast-forwarding, so I-
Okay, so whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and introduce yourself and present the project.
I don't know, I'm lucky enough to go first. Bill Jordan, 21 Wells Road, Jordan's Farm. I'm a farmer, I don't know much about cell towers and cell phones, except they ring when it's inconvenient. We grow vegetables, and every year, we plant a whole bunch of different vegetables, and at the end of the year, we've harvested, and hopefully have enough to do it again the next year. We have the property- We have the property behind the farm that is ledge, rocks, hills, trees. We harvested the trees a few years ago. If I'm lucky, I might live long enough to see another harvest, but I don't know. There aren't many options for that land back there. One option is, you know, and we've had the option in the past, is houses. We don't really wanna do that, it's a one-time crop, and then you're done. When this cell tower thing came along, that is kind of a permanent crop, or at least for a lot of, a lot of years, of a steady income, and it would help my nephews, my son, and my family being able to continue to farm without, and still leave the majority of that property wild up there. And that's why we've entertained the idea of letting Crown Castle build a cell tower on our property. What I've got to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, again, my name's Victor Minugian, I'm with McLean Middleton Professional Association, 900 Elm Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, and I appear before you again tonight on behalf of Global Signal Acquisitions for LLC, tonight for site plan review. I just wanna take a minute to review where we've been, mostly for the residents that are either here or watching from home. This process officially started with this board, I'm sorry, with the council on January 31st of this year, when I submitted the rezoning application for a new tower overlay district. On March 13th, the council referred that request to you. On June 20th, you approved 5 to 0 to support the rezoning request for the new tower overlay district. And then on July 10th, the town council voted to refer the zoning amendment to the ordinance committee. And July 11th, the ordinance committee voted 3 to 0 to send the tower overlay map amendment back to the council for their consideration. And on August 14th, the council considered it and adopted the change. We started the site plan review process with your board on September 5th with the workshop, and here we are today seeking site plan review for our installation under Article 9 of your zoning ordinances. We tried in this application not to request any waivers. At the end of this, I am going to verbally request one, but I'll start with what we've submitted, and I'm gonna briefly summarize what each one says, all the reports we submitted. I have 10 people here with me on our team today. I'll introduce people as I hand off, and then if anybody has questions of any of our experts, we'll bring them up as needed and introduce them at that point. I'll start with the traffic study that was done by, on October 9th of this year, by Hudson Design Group. Very brief report, and it highlights very minimal traffic, and the report says that at most, there will be 10 trips a month for a maximum of five carriers that might be on it. 10 trips is going in and going out, so five times two, and that's just for maintenance. Check the equipment, small pickup truck, hardly noticeable. And at the beginning, as we've stated, we expect to have three carriers and hopefully two more later at some point. The next report we submitted is the sound study. The sound study showed that the levels at the property line are expected to be well below the Cape Elizabeth standard of 45 decibels. And in the report, it talks about the decibel levels at the property line, with just the regular equipment being 36 decibels, and from the closest residents being 28 decibels. And then if you add in three emergency generators, it jumps to 41 decibels at the property line and 32 decibels at the nearest residence. The modeling was done on the worst-case scenario basis. The modeling was done using shelters that are there now, the carriers that are on there now, if they go over, when they go over, they will use equipment cabinets, so it'll actually be quieter. There won't be HVAC units to cool off the shelters, and most of the industry has gone that way now. And also, we are installing on the eight-foot fence a sound barrier to help diffuse any noise that may come from the equipment. And again, the author of that report is here, if the board has any questions. We then submitted a light study, very brief, three lamps. It's not gonna point outside, and it will comply with the ordinance. In addition, the sound barrier that we're gonna install on the eight-foot fence will also trap any light, even though they're pointed down, it'll completely trap light from going out. The next report we submitted is the FAA approval, indicating that this tower and the height will not be a hazard to air navigation, and therefore, it will not have to be lighted. The next report we submitted is the RF emissions compliance report, and the report conclusions, excuse me. The report conclusion states that this facility with five, up to five carriers will comply with, I'm sorry, with our current carriers that are going to be on it will comply with the FCC requirements. With a total emission for the three carriers and the town equipment, namely, the municipal safety equipment, will be 1.206% of the allowable MPE of a maximum of 100%. And as you know, that's regulated by the FCC, and we will be well under that. So I talked about us trying to comply and not ask for any waivers. What we are going to ask for is a waiver of the stamped plan signed by a Maine-registered professional land surveyor. Our current drawings are signed by a PE. This is a very large parcel. Due to the size of the parcel, it'll be very costly and also very time-consuming, even to try to do it in time for future meetings, if future meetings are required. And as your materials submitted by Ms. O'Meara state, that you do have a prior survey on file. We're building a tower, it's several hundred feet from the property line, we're not going to need to record the plan at the registry, so we feel that stamped by a PE is enough for this. And as I have checked, you've done that in the past for similar requests for installations of this type. And a lot of the speakers after me will present a lot of information that was alluded to as being missing. The one thing we cannot give you today, and we will have it for the December 19th planning board meeting, other stormwater calculations. We are working on those, and we will have those. And again, we wanna try to comply with your ordinances completely. Unfortunately, time-wise, that didn't work. With that, that's my quick summary of our submittal, and I wanna turn it over now to Lucas Anthony, a civil engineer from Goral Palmer, to go over the drawings, et cetera.
Thanks, Victor. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As Victor said, my name's Lucas Anthony, I'm an engineer with Goral Palmer in South Portland, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. As Maureen indicated, we're here tonight for a completeness review on both the site plan and resource protection permit. So relative to that, I'm gonna spend a little bit of time, first, briefly walking through the plans that we've created, and then, secondly, summarizing and discussing some of the completeness request items that you have in the memo from Maureen. So the applicant has made a submittal on November 2nd for site plan review for 180-foot wireless communications tower. The site's located at 19 Wells Road on the Jordan Farm property. The plans that you have in front of you were created by EBI Consulting in Burlington, Massachusetts, and I'll be referring to these through my discussion, so those are also in your packets. I'll scroll down. The site is located 19 Wells Road, as we noted earlier, which is off Spurwink Road and north of Wells Road. The site can be accessed by the existing gravel, gravel road, Deer Run, and at the end of Deer Run Road, there is a existing 8-to-12-foot gravel woods road, and that extends north almost to the end of the property. That's the road that will be used to access the tower site. And again, that's an existing road, it's 8-to-10, 12 feet wide, kind of varies. As it runs along the pond, it does get somewhat narrower there, just to get over the pond So as part of this project, we'll be improving the gravel road. Mainly, that will consist of resurfacing, leveling it off, and providing a surface that it's, to serve the vehicles that are intended to maintain the site, and also to allow emergency vehicles to access the tower site. We will be making drainage improvements to the road as part of this application in order to ensure proper drainage and also prevent erosion during the post-construction period. Where the tower site will be located is within a 100-by-100-foot lease area, and inside that lease area, there's a 75-by-75-foot gravel pad. On that pad will be located the tower and the ancillary equipment that services the tower. It'll be fenced by an eight-foot-high fence, and on the exterior of the fence, there will be some evergreen trees planted for visual buffering. As I mentioned earlier, the gravel road to get to the tower site is existing. However, the last stretch from right near the tower, of about 250 feet, we do have to construct a new segment of road. That road was sited to, really to avoid the resource protection zone and to minimize any impact to that area. Overhead electric will be brought to the site from where Deer Run ends, at the end of that gravel road, it'll be brought up the new road by overhead poles. So let's quick overview of the plans, and next, I'd like to refer you to the memo from Maureen on the summary of completeness for the site plan review. I'll walk through a couple items there. Victor briefly mentioned the survey and that we're requesting a waiver. He also mentioned item I, where the town engineers recommended a stormwater review be performed. We're currently in the process of doing those calculations and expect to have them ready for the next board meeting. Item L, references that no landscaping was proposed, and as part of the original application, that was true. However, since that time, the applicant has proposed to install an evergreen, we'll call it a hedge, around the exterior of the fence. And we have a revised set of plans that depicts that, and that'll also be depicted on the plans, the updated plans this board will receive for the next meeting. Those are the items under the site plan completeness checklist, and the applicant would like to request that the board consider the application complete. In addition, as we move on, there's a completeness summary for the resource protection permit, and I wanted to touch on that just a bit. Item number two, topographic survey. We have provided existing topography for the site, and that's within your plan set. So you can see, we provided the existing topography and also some of the proposed topography. As part of the stormwater calculations and revisions we'll make to the plans, the rest of the proposed topo will be included. Item number three, there's a significant written discussion of the parcel, but not a specific written description of the entire parcel. What we hope to do is get the survey updated, and that would include a legal description of the entire parcel. Item number five, the applicant has mapped wetlands based on soils rather than vegetation. Subsequent to the initial application, TRC has performed a full wetland delineation, and we're gonna make that information available to the board for the next application, or to Maureen shortly after this meeting. And item number nine, the stormwater, we touched on already, as an item that we're working on currently, and we'll have ready for the next meeting. Similar to before, I'd like to ask the board to consider the application complete so that we may move on to the next stage. That's all I have.
Paul, if you're up next?
Do a couple pages. Which are the photo sims? A lot of you have seen these before, but for the people that haven't in the audience, this is the photo sims that we performed. This is the way the infrastructure looks today. I'm just gonna scroll down, doesn't seem to... This is how it would look in mid-construction. You can see the new infrastructure, the new tower over the left-hand side, the two existing towers on the right-hand side. The, you know, the beefier self-support tower is the one that's coming down, the guide tower will remain, the slimmer monopole is the new one that's proposed over to the left. Again, this is what it would look like post-construction, new monopole over to the left, existing guide tower on the right. These photos are taken from right there at the intersection of Wells Road and Spurwink, at the front of Jordan's Farm. This picture taken from Lighton Farm Road. Again, this is the old infrastructure, wasn't visible through the trees, and that's the same with the new infrastructure. Here, taken from the golf course, same scenario, just wasn't visible through the trees. These photos were taken from the wastewater treatment plant. This is how it looks today with the two towers side by side, and this is how it would look with the new tower over to the left-hand side. This is taken from the corner of Spurwink Church. You can see the two towers just right there at the edge of the tree limit, right on the horizon. And then when you move it over to the new structure, it's tucked in behind the trees, not visible from this angle. This is taken from Sawyer Road just before you're heading over to the marsh. You can see the two towers just above the tree line. I'm gonna give this a shot, see if I can get the... Here's the same shot with the new infrastructure, the new monopoles identified there in the tree cover. Now, this came up during the planning commission meeting about that view from pepper grass and tiger lily, and when we responded, this was the view that we had. So based on the questions that were raised in the planning commission member, planning board meeting, excuse me, we sent the team back out to do additional photos, and what we asked them to do is drive the entire length of both pepper grass and tiger lily to see if they could see the balloon. This is the shot that they took. Here's where the tower does come in, right over the top of this house here. Moving on, this is taken from tiger lily. You can see the old infrastructure is not visible, but the new infrastructure is just tucked in there behind the... tucked in there behind the trees. Sent them to the site itself. This is at the center of the monopole looking north. Again, at the site looking south. Here's the site looking east, and then finally, the site looking west. That's it for the formal presentation, and we're here and happy to answer any questions. Sit down.
Could I interrupt for a second? I don't know if Jonathan's working in the sound booth, but my monitor isn't working. It makes it very difficult for me to hear, so who is ever in the sound booth that they could turn them up?
Oh, my apologies. It could be me, I didn't have this.
No, no, it's not you.
Okay.
It's these things.
Okay. Happy to answer any...
Yes.
Good to have you, Maureen.
Oh, yes ma'am, I'm so sorry. It's Paul Peckins with Crown Castle, and I'm out of our Richmond, Virginia office.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Do any of the members of the board have any questions before we open it up?
Jonathan? I just have a question for Maureen. Maureen, am I incorrect? I thought it was if a storm, if an application isn't going to affect more than 10,000 square feet, then a stormwater assessment is not necessary.
That is true. If, under, and remember, we're reviewing it under two sets of standards. So, under site plan, your standard is that if you have less than 10,000 square feet of impervious surface, you do not have to do what we call the pre-impost calculations. What you are supposed to provide us with is an LID, a low-impact development feature. But under the resource protection permit standards, we have not made those standards mirror site plan. So, in that one, it does say you're supposed to have a stormwater report prepared by a professional engineer, which the board can waive, and I'd suggest that you could look to the site plan standards for some instruction as to whether it's appropriate to waive it.
Thank you. So, we are getting a resource protection permit application that details how the, what steps will be taken in the building of the road and...
The applicant should be providing that information as part of the site plan anyway, and the resource protection permit, in my opinion, the most important pieces of information that you should have is a good quality mapping of the wetlands and a decent explanation of what activity is happening in the wetlands, and you could make the decision that the plans that you received that were submitted November 3rd had at least that much information in it.
Victoria?
Once again, for you, Maureen, under completeness on item D, no survey has been submitted for the 67-acre parcel. What is your opinion on that as far as completeness goes?
Well, in the past, the board has been more flexible with very large parcels where there's not a lot of activity, and I would refer to the prior tower application that, on 14 Strout Road, on that application, you did waive the requirement for a full boundary survey. You required that you had get boundary information for the two north-south boundary lines, but you didn't require the full survey. In this case, this particular property has been before the planning board in 2007 when the Jordan family created some house lots for the family members, and there was a survey created at that time, and it is on file in the office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can I ask the applicant, what are, you've shown boundary lines, what's that based on? Are they based on just looking at the existing survey?
What sheet are you looking at?
C1.
So, the boundary lines on that sheet are based on the town's GIS mapping, so they were taken directly from that.
Okay. That's tax map, correct?
Uh-huh.
Maureen? The front portion of the property was done by the engineer and the surveyor up to where the tower was because we specifically had to map out how the overlay district was extended into the property, but they didn't carry it all the way back, just simply due to the size of the track itself.
So, which lines are you saying were, are located? You're saying the 100, the 250-foot square is located properly or accurately?
Oh, yes, sir. The front drive in...
Is it the heavy black line?
Uh... See if I can get back up to my server.
Question answered.
Okay, Maureen, can you answer?
I just want to say that when the board was looking at the tower overlay district application, I did tell the applicant they needed to provide us with very good quality information on where that square is located, and they did provide me meets and bounds, distances, and that's how it was drawn and was approved. So, I believe there was better quality information for the tower overlay district.
But even the district itself, Maureen, I don't believe was itself the subject of a survey and monumented corners and all the rest of it.
Yeah, that was never monumented, no.
So, it's still drawn from reference points, right?
Yes, and if I remember correctly, it was taking the corner of the Jordan Farm property where it intersects with Deer Run Road and goes, I don't know, it was like 471 feet, and then going and creating a square.
Joe?
Victoria?
What type of, is that RP1 or RP2 up there? Can you answer that? From the, the, this was something that was discussed by the planning board when you recommended the tower overlay district in June, because it was raised by staff that you can't build new roads in buffer zones. So, the portion called RP1 that is to the south of the road, that is absolutely an RP1 wetland, and that is the one that has the 250-foot buffer, and the applicant was working pretty hard on the wetland to the north, which is identified on here as CE-5, and that's an RP2 wetland. Thank you.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, the, if I understood your presentation correctly, much of the road is simply going to stay what it is with some resurfacing gravel and the like, but there's a segment up near the tower site where you will actually be, I take it, cutting road or doing more to it than the rest of the road will entail? Could you go into that in a little more detail?
Yeah, the, if you can see on the screen there, this segment from the existing road to this tower site, and it's kind of hard to see on this plan, maybe I can, I can get a bigger one, right here, that's, that's better. So, the tower site is this box, 75 by 75, and this road from, from this edge of the tower site, all the way over to the existing road, that's the new stretch we're talking about, and that's about 250 feet long.
And that's within the RP1 buffer or no?
That is not within the RP1 buffer.
Okay, you couldn't do that there if it were?
No, we weren't permitted to put a new road in the RP1 buffer.
Is that in the RP2 or is it in wetland at all?
The RP1, the buffer shows pretty clearly on sheet C3 where it ends. You see that 250-foot wetland?
Which is, is this line.
I'm sorry, you want to say C3?
C3, yeah.
And I'm also pointing to that on the screen.
It just says of the tower. You see it? You see it? So, it just splits off the existing road for just that last little bit to get into the tower.
That's correct.
Maureen, that was actually a suggestion when they originally came, they were going to create a new road through the buffer, and we actually had them, and they changed their application to actually use the existing gravel road that's been there for years, and then make this new one that's not in either RP1 buffer, or RP2 buffer, or RP1 buffer zone or an RP2, correct?
Correct.
All right, any other questions?
Just one, this is all going to be gravel?
Yes.
No tar, no anything, just the concrete is for inside the actual, or the antenna and any sort of generators or machinery that's going to have to be used?
Correct. The inside the fence line is a 75-foot-by-75-foot gravel area. Some of the equipment will sit on concrete, but otherwise, it's gravel.
What do you think the estimated amount of concrete per square feet is going to be? Is it going to be in excess of 10,000?
No.
What do you think?
Less than 1,000.
Less than 1,000?
Yes.
It's small.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, I'm going to now open this up to public comment. I want to just remind everybody that this is a hearing on the completeness of the application and not the substantive issues, so if you could keep your comments to that, I think it will speed things along. So, who here is going to speak? Okay. Oh, yeah, and the, we have a three-minute limit as our usual.
Good evening. My name is Nat Bessie. I'm an attorney at Brandon Isaacson. I've been retained to represent Jeff and Sonia Gorman of 9 Peppergrass Road. The Gormans are, and their neighbors in the Crosshill neighborhood are very interested in this project, and they're here to make their voices heard. The application, as we indicated in written comments that were provided to the planning board, is incomplete in a number of regards. First of all, with respect to the resource protection permit, our view is that it's improper to amend the agenda to include an application a day in advance when the rules of the planning board require 18 days' advance notice, and similarly, multiple items from that are required submission requirements for the resource protection permit have been either promised at a later date or not provided. As a result, with that, with respect to that application, the planning board should vote that this application is incomplete and wait until that information has been received before making a completeness motion and proceeding to a consideration of the merits. With respect to the completeness of the site plan application, we pointed out a number of potentially technical incompleteness issues. There is inconsistency in the plan and the application regarding the identity of the applicant, whether that is STC6 Company as marked on the plans, or Global Signal Acquisitions 4 LLC, which is the name of the applicant in the site plan application. That inconsistency ought to be corrected before any completeness finding is made. In our review of the file, we do not see a ability to serve letter from Central Maine Power, and similarly, that applicant identity inconsistency may come into play with respect to financial capacity. It's unclear from the record and the file available to the public whose information was reviewed by the town manager. That's something that's not available to us as members of the public to see. The core issues, however, that I think are missing and that are incomplete in this application, it is a submission requirement for a tower application such as this to provide information that would demonstrate compliance with the tower performance standards, and certain information is, in the view of the Gormans, missing, specifically information regarding coverage before and after. There was no coverage map provided that shows coverage before and after as in the context of the, of the networks of any given carrier. In fact, it is, at this point, based on the application, it appears purely speculative which carriers will actually come and locate on the tower. That plays into the second concern, which is one for co-location, a requirement under the tower performance standards. This planning board may require a wireless carrier to locate on an existing tower in order to provide for co-location, and information was not provided with respect to that, that issue as well. And then, finally, we had pointed out environmental impact, and that was recognized, but you heard our comments about the resource protection permit, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Is anyone else speaking? If you, yeah, you can mosey on up there.
Good evening. I'm Robert Crispin, owner of 5 Peppergrass, along with my wife Kathleen. Currently not represented by council, but I may well find myself in that position at some point. Now, in deference to your comments, Mr. Chair, about comments being regarding the completeness, I note that Mr. Jordan's comments to start the session had nothing to do with completeness, so I assume that what my opportunity would be to speak would be consistent with what was provided, Mr. Jordan. May I assume that?
Well, not really. He's introducing the project.
I don't see the difference.
Yeah, he's an owner of the property.
Well, I'm an owner of a property who's affected.
If the project is deemed complete, you have plenty of, you will have an opportunity to speak at a public hearing and air your opinions on the application.
So, you're telling me I don't have the right to speak? I just want to make sure.
You have the right to speak, absolutely, but we're asking you to speak on the issues of completeness of the application at this point.
All right, and when will I be able to speak on other issues?
When you schedule a public hearing.
Yes.
Which will be when?
Don't know yet.
We don't know yet. We haven't deemed, we haven't gotten as far as deeming the application complete.
But any comments tonight are out of line, you're telling me? I just want to make sure.
They may not be taken account of.
Pardon me?
That we may not take account of them because we have not deemed the application complete yet.
And are you planning to deem it complete?
No, no. I don't know.
You have one minute left, Mr. Crispin.
Okay, fine. So, I ask a question, you know, of the, are you planning to deem it complete?
We don't have, we don't have a plan to go either way.
So, we're waiting here from the public, we're going to discuss it, and then we're going to take a vote.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Matt Campbell from Tiger Lily Lane, 19 Tiger Lily Lane. Thanks for allowing me a chance to ask a question or talk about the completeness. In the pictures, and I appreciate Crown Castle, based out of Virginia, not Maine, taking pictures of Tiger Lily Lane and all the other areas, is it complete, or could they do a complete job by taking those pictures with the leaves off? Half the year, the leaves are off the trees. It's a simple question.
Ask the question again.
Could you guys, in asking for completeness, because like Mr. Jordan, I'm the simple guy, and I don't really understand this whole process, it's been thrown at us.
The applicant addressed those.
So, I would love to know, I guess, in completeness, from a visual perspective, those pictures are great with the leaves on the trees. I'd love to see the pictures with the leaves off the trees. That's my statement. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Baldwin, 1 Peppergrass Road, and I would just like to support Matt a little bit in the visual impact of the tower, what, how it was presented. When you look at the pictures, actually, the tower shows up in different locations in the individual pictures, and I don't think it's representative of the actual height or impact on the community in the Tiger Lily, Peppergrass areas, and I strongly object to the approval of this tower with the... So I would love to know, I guess, in completeness, from a visual perspective, those pictures are great with the leaves on the trees, I'd love to see the pictures with the leaves off the trees, that's my statement, thank you.
Hi, I'm John Baldwin, 1 Peppergrass Road, and I would just like to support Matt a little bit in the visual impact of the tower, what, how it was presented. When you look at the pictures, actually, the tower shows up in different locations in the individual pictures, and I don't think it's representative of the actual height or impact on the community in the Tiger Lily Pepper Grass areas, and I strongly object to the approval of this tower with 14 Strout Road already in place and the efforts to co-locate towers into one area, this seems completely redundant, thank you.
Justin Strout, representing the Strout Trust Tower Specialists, we're abutters to this property, and as far as completeness, I would say that the survey concerns me. When you have a road that is going right along the edge of the property line, I'd like to know that it's located, especially when they have to widen it and redo a spillway and a bunch of other things, I'd like to know that it's where it's supposed to be. I would also like to note that when we provided our application, we had to do, based on the setbacks, we had to do the property sidelines to make sure that the setbacks were in the right location, the tower was in the right location. I think that's, that's one of my biggest concerns, and then I essentially echo, Mr. Bessie said, you know, CMP, CMP letter, that was something that was the first thing I saw that you had to actually provide and they didn't provide. Another thing they didn't provide, which I had to provide and is not in their application, is I had to provide a list of abutters, and I didn't see that anywhere in the application. So I guess that's what I have for completeness issues, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Fran Ty of 13 Pepper Grass Road, echoing Matt Campbell's comments about the photos that were taken to show the visual impact, I didn't see one from closer to my property and I would like to see that, but probably more importantly, I think it, and I'm not an expert in evaluating visual impacts, but I think it's customary to use a weather balloon to float it at the height at which the tower will be located, and I think the visual impact of this proposed tower isn't only important to the people that live in Layton Farms and Cross Hill and in the neighborhoods along Spurwick, but this is, this is a part of Cape Elizabeth, which is very heavily traveled, a tremendous amount of resources have already been expended to protect the open space and natural beauty of this area, including the farm, the green belt around Cross Hill, and I think a lot of people in this town would like to see what the visual impact of that tower would be because they travel through this part of town frequently, and they live here because they appreciate the natural beauty and open spaces. And I think that opportunity should be given to all the people in the town, the date at which that weather balloon would be floated, would be publicized, and everyone who lives in this town could weigh in on what the impact of that tower would be, particularly in this part of the town. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, hi, my name is Robert Robinson, I'm at 17 Tiger Lily Lane, along with my wife Stephanie. Concerning the completeness of the application, not being familiar with these matters, I believe that the application should have made reference to the ordinance that's already in the town to limit the number of towers based on a co-location. I believe there's another tower that's being already, that's already been approved, that's replacing the existing tower, that will have sufficient ability, and I'm concerned that we're actually building a second tower less than 500 feet, I don't see that as a necessity, and I'm concerned that it's actually going to be less effective than the replacement tower that's actually already been approved by the council, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'm closing the public hearing and opening it to the board, Henry.
I guess this is for Maureen. Is there an ordinance that says about co-location, what, how does it apply to this particular thing that we have, that is proposed to have two towers within a few hundred feet of one another, and according to the site service areas that I see on the map, they don't seem to be greatly improved on the new one, in fact, they seem to be almost identical to what the old one would be, so how does the town requirement fit in with that legally, do we know?
Yeah, the first thing is, the co-location requirement is in the tower performance standards, and what that requirement says is that any tower you approve must agree to allow other carriers onto the tower, so that is the co-location requirement. If you want to talk about limiting the number of towers in town, we control that by the limited number of tower overlay districts that have been created. You can only build a commercial telecommunications tower in a tower overlay district, and the town council decided that a tower overlay district could be created on 19 Wells Road. So the way you limit the number of towers is by not allowing too many tower overlay districts. And finally, you know, I've had a lot of calls from people, I understand some people are not happy about this, but I feel obligated to point out that the town council has identified improved cell coverage on at least the last three goals setting that they've done for the last three years, and the council has made it clear they are trying to improve cell coverage, not constrain it. And finally, there is absolutely true that right now, the town has competing telecommunications tower proposals before it, and it has been the position of this planning board during the tower overlay district review, the ordinance committee during the tower overlay district review, and the council during the tower overlay district review, that the town is going to remain neutral, and this was a competition between two private parties, that the applications would be reviewed for compliance with the standards in the ordinance, and there wasn't going to be a preference for one application over the other. And I can't speak for the board, it's up to you to make those decisions, but that's been my understanding through this entire process.
I guess my simplistic way of looking at it, it's a race, correct?
Yes.
Whoever gets that tower built first, we assume the other guy's not going to build the other one because it would be a waste of time and money, but I'm not sure that's the correct.
But to be fair, if both of them get approval, both of them can be built.
That is correct, it is, it is possible.
Jonathan?
So I just have a question for the applicant with regards to the visual representations that were made to us. I'm perfectly satisfied with the pictures from Wells Road, from Sawyer Road, from Spurwick Avenue, from a distance that were done, I think these give a very, and I would urge the public to take a look at what's online with regards to the visual depictions that were shown to us earlier tonight, I think they give a very realistic representation of what the proposed new tower is going to look like, and also noting that the larger tower that exists now is going to be gone. That was part of the last application that was made, they were taking down one tower and we approved another tower, but the larger tower that's there now is coming down, and I think that is currently owned by Crown Castle, correct? So that's the basis for a new tower that's being proposed by Crown Castle, they're actually taking their existing tower down off of one property and are proposing to put it up on another. The other question I had though is, when we came in, is that my concerns were for the residents of Tiger Lily Lane and Pepper Grass Road with regards to what the visual impact is going to be from theirs, and originally, it was told to us that there wasn't going to be a visual impact, and then I commend you for going out and doing another test, but I was hoping you could explain sort of the process on how you come about and make these pictures that you provided to us about how it's going to look, if you could just explain that a little bit to, for our, on our behalf and for the public, on how you come about to make these representations on what it's going to look like.
Again, what was raised earlier, we do float what they call a cloud buster balloon, it's a four-foot weather balloon, and they run it up to whatever the height of the tower is, they go to the different spots, take the photographs, and then superimpose whatever type of tower that is proposed, whether it's a monopole guide tower, self-support tower, at that height of where the weather balloon is.
So if we look very carefully in those photos, we should see the balloon?
The balloon is taken out of that and the image of the tower is superimposed in there. So it just, it gives a height reference, and they do, they can do weather balloons or geodetic measures or, you know, geographic measures, just to make sure that they're kind of capturing those right angles.
And so on that point, you did do this test, it looks like originally in the winter when the leaves weren't on the trees, but then when we asked you as the planning board to go back and do more testing, that was during the summer?
Yes, sir, the first was done in February, the second was done in July.
Do you have any idea what number, Pepper Grass Road, this is?
I believe it's number five, I believe it's Mr. Crispin's property.
Okay, all right, that's helpful, I guess you can look at a map, but.
Thank you, sir.
Can you address the questions regarding the coverage maps, how they're developed and depicted?
I'm actually going to pull Steve up here, RF engineer, he's, he's the gentleman that has far more experience to cover that.
Oh, come back on the, on the visual.
Steve Kennedy, I'm a consultant for Crown Castle on 5512 West Coolidge Street, Goodyear, Arizona. I designed the, designed a search ring based upon, I wanted to duplicate as much as possible the existing coverage, so there's three existing carriers right now residing on that existing self-support tower, which being AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon, so what I do is when I design a search ring, I try to duplicate it and make as small amount of change to the coverage level as possible, try to make it the same as it was before as much as possible. So when I designed the ring, I gave direction to the Crown Castle real estate people to go a certain direction, go a little farther west, try to get up a little bit higher on the hill, so to duplicate the coverage as much as possible. So running propagation models within a specialized piece of gear software called A-Toll, we plot that system out and to show what that antenna is going to do as far as coverage levels within that geographic area, takes into account terrain, foliage, existing structures, path loss, basically is how much radio waves as they get farther and farther away from the transmitter lower in power, that's the aspect of how we look at, the other part of it is the equipment types, the equipment types are going to probably change, going from a ground-based radio amplifier to a tower-based radio amplifier from the old site to the new site, so there should be some slight changes in coverage as in better coverage or better throughput because the radio is closer to the antenna instead of being ran up with coax. So those are the application, that's the application of how the coverage is going to be done, how it's created or how it's modeled within the system.
Is that hardware or are you using just software?
It's software that takes into account existing coverage from other sites, from drive-test gear, and that model is then optimized to make it closer to what we see in the real world, because it's a theoretical model, it's running along the map.
A theoretical model, yes.
It's a theoretical model that takes real-world data and intunes that model to what the site's going to do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, does that answer your question?
Sorry?
Yes, does that answer your question?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Peter, you wanted to?
Yes, I, on the business of the visual impact of these towers, somebody else did point out we're going from the larger structure into the monopole, which reduces the visual, what you can see anyway, but I hate to go low-tech on you, rather than floating weather balloons, can't you simply take a topographical map and do a cross-section, running on an axis from Spurwick over to Cross Hill and put where the site of the tower is going to be, 180-foot rise, and then, it just seems to me a much easier way to do it, and you could even build in the heights of the trees and everything else.
And for my engineers, I'm going to just say, make sure you check me on this, that's where I think that geographic and geodetic measuring comes into play, is that angles and height, so not only are they, they can do balloons, but they can also do that other engineering, like you said, it's the low-tech engineering.
What you presented was based on the balloon, is that, am I correct?
It was a combination of the two.
Of both, so what you've presented in those pictures would actually, could be graphically illustrated from a, looking at the geodetics of the area?
I apologize, I'm not quite sure that I really understand the question, I'll need...
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, there was some question as to how true and accurate these photos might or might not be, and I guess what I'm asking you is, would that, would those photos square up exactly if you simply took a topographical map and did a cross-section, running from, you know, from the site of the tower up to Cross Hill, wouldn't you get a very accurate, based on the contours and 180-foot of tower, a very accurate picture from what you'd see from the top of the hill?
I believe so, sir, but I'd have to get the engineers that did the draw, that did those tests for us to be able to answer that directly, but this is a common practice that we use when we're doing photo simulations, yes, sir.
Anything else, Jonathan?
I just have one question for Maureen, Maureen, coverage maps are not a requirement of the ordinance, correct?
Well, actually, we did put something in there that said you had, we have coverage maps.
Okay, because originally when the, when we approved the Shore Acres water tower to be, that was not a requirement at that time, but they provided that to us anyway.
They did, and then we did a package of technical letters.
That's right, okay.
And a member of the planning board asked for that to be added.
I think that was me, wasn't it?
It was you. So it has been added.
I didn't know you actually listened to me, it's not that.
But, I mean, the applicant hasn't said this, but I know they've told me that when they provide coverage maps for, let's say Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, they don't want to be held exactly to those, because they're concerned that then, you know, telephone users are going to use those, and that they're not, they're not for that purpose, they're for the purpose of giving you a sense of when you move this tower so far over, what area generally are you going to be covering?
Maureen, this may be staring me in the face, do we have in one of these maps a depiction of the tower overlay district and where this particular parcel sits within it?
Yes, I believe, and perhaps somebody could pull that up, but it's the black heavy line.
Yeah, if you look at C1.
C, there you go, C1, the heavy black box is the tower overlay district, and then it shows the entire parcel going from Wells Road up to the northerly boundary.
Okay, and then this within is the site itself.
That's the compound.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Also, there was a question about the abutters not being shown anywhere, and again, on sheet C1 is an entire list of all the abutters and the parcels they own, and it's keyed by number over onto the plan. Thank you, Victoria.
Just, twice it was mentioned the CMP ability to serve letter, did we receive that? Is that a requirement?
I believe that information about utilities is a requirement of site plan review, and I'm looking at the applicant because I don't remember seeing that, but again, to be fair, there have been many times when there have been site plan and subdivision applications where you've been informed that the letter's been requested, but it hasn't come in from CMP yet, so I'm going to just leave that with you, how you want to handle it.
Well, I know there are, it's true, we've gone through, I've gone through eight years of planning and yes, not everything is always ready, so what I always tell an applicant is, this better appear when we're ready to make that final vote, or I certainly would vote no based on an item that should be part of the package. Items that are missing that makes it impossible to go forward are the type of items that I personally then say, this is an incomplete. As far as a letter from CMP, I don't find that impossible to go on, but I would say, yes, we want that letter from the CMP if... if it's not already in our package. Same with the resource protection permit. Somebody said it was submitted too late. This is not the final meeting. So I'm glad to know it's on its way, or has been submitted with the other items. But I can move forward as far as what has been submitted. But I do want to see the CMP letter. So you took care of the list of abutters. As far as the road being surveyed, and the setback survey, I just want to ask, if that's, if we've done that in the past, should we do that now?
Honestly, I am hoping that the applicant will find a way to get ahold of that 2007 survey and update the plans they've submitted appropriately.
I'd like to see that, too. Okay. And this whole thing about, we don't really know who you are, you need to properly identify yourself. I'm just going to say, I remember one other time we felt the plat did not match up with the applicant's name. Just make sure that everything is matching.
Yes, ma'am.
So that there is no question. Because there seems to be a question on who the applicant is.
No.
That's all I have, John.
Jonathan?
As far as the applicant, what Victoria was just speaking about, about who the applicant is, I'm satisfied on who the applicant is. And part of the package that was also provided to us was a letter of authorization signed by four members of the Jordan family, authorizing Global Simon Acquisitions LLC, parentheses Crown, to go about this application. So I know some, counsel was representing some members of the public did bring that up. But I'm personally satisfied on knowing who the application and applicants are.
Jim?
No, it's not really part of completeness, but I know just for the next submission, the width of the road, especially over the dam, the spillway, is going to be an issue with me. It looked like it next down to 12 feet, at least what it said on the plan. And I imagine trying to get a big fire engine across that, steep sides, in the wintertime, icy, might be an issue. So that's something I will want to talk about when it's appropriate time.
All right, this, Peter.
Yeah, this is sort of a lingering concern of my own on the Steve Harding's letter. There seems to be a dearth of information about some of the construction work on that road, the siltation fence, and some of the other grading and work to be done. I don't know if the other members of the board are troubled by that, or has enough of start been made so that we can count on them to come up with the full detail when we actually consider our own merits.
Yeah.
I was surprised by how the scope of their comment on the defect.
That just seems like a good question opposed to the applicant right now.
Yes, the plans that were submitted are, I guess I should back up a little bit. The majority of the road is staying where it is, really. So I think when we actually do come in with revised plans, you won't see much of a difference in the way of contours. But we are putting together a revised erosion and sediment control plan, stormwater calculations, additional details for construction, probably a sequence of construction on, for erosion control purposes, and things like that. So you, as we move forward, a more detailed set will be provided to the board.
And just on, on that point, I've been on that road numerous times, from growing up and mountain biking on that road and skating on the pond. So I'm pretty satisfied on what they're representing with regards to maintaining that road, and also remembering that just like the Stroud property, this isn't going to be, this is going to be basically a driveway to access a cell tower, and that's about it. So...
No, I agree with you, Jonathan. And I, the only thing that surprised me was the extent of Steve Harding's comments on the lacking, the lack of information on the road, the siltation fence, the turnaround. And they do show a turnaround here, I think, but I guess he had some questions on the dimensions. It just, have you had a chance to respond to Harding's letter?
We have not. We just received that letter on the 15th and haven't had a chance to respond. We have reviewed the comments and feel sure that we can address them all, and will plan to do so, and also speak with Steve.
Yeah, the requirements are fairly simple, I think, but it's something that I think you should be responding to to his satisfaction.
I just want to point out, he does say, several of the comments here are beyond the level of completeness.
He didn't say which ones.
No, I know.
Yeah, that's his standard, his standard pattern. This seemed to be a completion-type thing. It was really data on the, some of the work that was to be done.
I think that, for one thing, that would be a good thing for us to look at on a sidewalk, so we understand really what's going on with it. So are there any other comments, questions? All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Excuse me. Motion for the board to consider, motion for completeness. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of global acquisitions for LLC for site plan, review of the proposed 180-foot tall communications tower to be located at 19 Wells Road be deemed complete.
We need to add...
Yeah, the resource protection permit.
Yes.
And that would be after Wells Road and a resource protection permit?
I would say after site plan review. So where it says, the application of global acquisitions for LLC for site plan review, and a resource protection permit.
Right. Okay, and a resource protection permit of a proposed 180-foot tall communications tower to be located at 19 Wells Road be deemed complete.
Second? All in favor? Is unanimous? All right, sidewalk.
Before we get to the sidewalk, Maureen, could you just briefly address the spectrum, I guess the federal law with regard to the spectrum law that talks about that municipalities are limited in discussing the safety of these cellphone towers?
Absolutely.
And that's one of the reasons why I didn't bring this up during the completeness discussion.
So, I mean, my first exposure to this was in 1999, when the first federal telecommunications act had been passed, and the town adopted regulations to accommodate that. And there have been multiple amendments to the federal act over time. And each one peels back even further towns' authority to review telecommunications tower sites. But in my opinion, and the opinion of the town attorney way back in 1999, towns are prohibited from looking at health impacts. That authority has been reserved to the federal government. It's regulated by the FCC. And honestly, this application tonight is the first time I have seen any, any company even provide us information on health impacts. And they have provided information. They're asserting that they're meeting the FCC standards. But the town has no authority. I mean, that's, it's a good way to get any approval or any decision you may thrown out. You're not allowed to look at health impacts at the local level.
Thank you. All right. Site plan.
Yeah, can we go back to that?
That's a good idea.
Why don't we do the same date? Let's go from...
Go from one to the other?
Yeah.
Should we do this one before?
What's that?
Oh, not before. After.
You're killing my morning here.
You're going to be at church, right?
Yeah.
Who's in at 3:00 your time?
9:30?
So Hannaford Cove Road, yeah.
Because it's a small site.
Yeah, very...
Probably won't take an hour, but...
No, it's okay.
9:15?
It'll take a half hour, 45 minutes. And that gives us 10 minutes to drive all over. Yeah.
9:30?
9:30.
Is that okay with you?
Applicant. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, 9:30, Sunday morning.
December 3rd.
December 3rd.
Do you want to tell the applicant to pick him up?
Yes.
Donuts.
That's nice.
Okay, so...
No location, where is...
I think we park on Deer Run. So the public is invited to the sidewalk. At that time, the public is, we do not customarily take questions or comments from the public during the sidewalks. So it's important, if you do have questions or comments, that you email them to Maureen, and she'll distribute them to us. But you're all welcome to come to the sidewalk.
Would you like me to send a little map for everyone that says we're meeting at the intersection of Deer Run and Hockey Pond Road?
That is the place.
That, everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Joe, can you say the date again? Yeah, the date is December 3rd, 9:30. It's a Sunday.
This will be posted on the town's website under the calendar, too, so anyone can go and look at that.
Oh, thank you. Do we have a motion to table? Victoria.
Motion to table. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of global acquisitions for LLC for site plan review of a proposed 180-foot tall telecommunications tower be located at 19 Wells Road be tabled for the regular December 19, 2017 meeting of the planning board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Second? Maureen?
Can we add in resource protection permit?
Yes, and resource protection permit.
All in favor? Is unanimous? Jim, you second it.
I do.
Well, I hope so.
All right. Next item on the agenda, if you're going to stay and chat, please step outside the chamber. Next item is the Ware private accessway permit. Peter Ware is requesting a private accessway permit to create frontage and access for a lot located at the rear of 69 Beach Bluff Terrace, Section 19-7-9 private accessway, and we will be discussing completeness.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, good evening, board members. My name is Dustin Roma, civil engineer with DM Roma Consulting Engineers. Also have with me tonight, Jim Logan here.
Could you speak louder, please?
Absolutely. So Dustin Roma, DM Roma Consulting Engineers, representing Peter Ware. I was in the audience here tonight. And Jim Logan is here as well with Longview Partners, the wetland scientist and site evaluator that assisted on the project as well. So what we're proposing is a back lot accessway construction to provide frontage for a new residential construction on an existing lot of record. This property has frontage on the paper street of Thompson Road, which is one of the roads vacated by the town. And what we're proposing is to build an 18-foot-wide gravel accessway within a 30-foot easement from the end of Beach Bluff Terrace to provide access and frontage for the back land. The parcel to be, to be developed with a new home is about a half acre in size, currently undeveloped, predominantly forest land. There is a stream that runs along the eastern side of the property, and some rather large trees that kind of run along the western side, stone wall in the back. And as we are proposing, a new utility pole to be installed at the end of the roadway to extend overhead power just along Beach Bluff Terrace. At that point, we'll begin underground power installation back to the home. We have had quite a bit of back-and-forth discussion with the Portland Water District as far as the design of a water main extension and a service for this lot. So they have agreed to allow for the extension of the existing water main in Beach Bluff Terrace, and then the construction of a water service that would serve this new dwelling. So, and it's close enough to the roadway where it seems at this time we're not going to need a meter pit, so it can just be a regular service off the water main. So typically, the Water District will provide an ability-to-serve letter once they've completed a, kind of a full technical review of the entire water service design. That's been their, their recent protocol for these types of projects lately. We've shown a anticipated building size and kind of building envelope on the plans. We've showed some proposed grading that around the building, just to give you a sense of the envelope and the limits of disturbance on the site, especially where they are in proximity to the wetlands and the streams on the property and adjacent to the parcel. We've showed the location, just by a note, of a proposed leach field location. Mr. Logan has completed an HHE 200 septic system design for the project in the location that we've identified as the, as the leach field area. So that information will be provided to the board in our subsequent submission packages. We understand that the town has been in discussion about constructing a, an extension of Beach Bluff Terrace so that there's, will be an improved turnaround area for public works equipment. We're certainly supportive of this. If the town can make this happen, I think it would greatly improve the ability for vehicles to turn around at the end of the road. We would certainly cooperate and build the first portion of the roadway, the access driveway into the lot, to be in conformance with the town's turnaround requirements if that is the, if that ends up coming to fruition. So we would certainly be happy to cooperate in that. And then if that were the case, then we would potentially eliminate the hammerhead turnaround that we've proposed at the end of the private accessway. Mr. Harding's comments suggest that perhaps the, if that were not to come to fruition for some reason, that the town standards are for a 40-foot-long turnaround at the end. We've shown a 30-foot, but there is additional length there so that we can extend that if needed. So we're, we do have the ability... needed, so we do have the ability to do that. I believe what I'm going to do now is I'm just turning it over to Mr. Logan just to talk about how we came up with the wetland delineations in the septic system design.
Good evening. Thank you, Dustin. I'm Jim Logan with Longview Partners, formerly 25 or 26 years with Albert Frick Associates. Bob Metcalf was here earlier talking about a project on Hannaford Cove Road. Al Frick mapped this, that, and the other. That was my map. Anyway, happy to be here with Peter Ware. I've been working with Peter Ware for many years. Peter owns the house in the front here and has always had an interest in the possibility for a house in the rear. It took quite a bit of time and deliberation at the town level with regard to this vacated road. You folks are probably very familiar with that. We basically delayed coming to the board until that part of, that component of this project was clarified. Now that the road has officially been vacated, the area of that road is intended to be added to the back lot, which was always a lot of record. Mr. Harding's letter pointed out that it was a new lot. It is a new construction, a new house, but it's been a lot of record on a map for a lot of years. Dustin mentioned that I did prepare a septic design for a three-bedroom dwelling. We will submit that for the next meeting, probably even prior to the sidewalk that we would hope that would get scheduled. I wanted to speak to the wetlands, both the wetlands on the property, which are RP2 wetlands, the poorly drained version. I am a certified soil scientist as well as a wetland scientist, so recognizing that the RP1 wetland setback would be established on the Robinson Woods property, which is adjacent to this lot. I sought input from the state soil scientist, David Roke, and had him come down and look at this line of very poorly drained versus poorly drained soils that was on the Robinson trust, so that we established very carefully the beginning point of measurement for that 250-foot critical wetland RP1 measurement. Mr. Roke was working with me through that timeframe. Once the flagging was fixed in the field at a comfortable location with his review, we had Netto Land Survey go back and actually pick the flags up and locate everything accurately by land survey. That is how the 250-foot offset is represented on this map. It is also how the RP2 wetlands, which are adjacent to a small stream that exits a culvert underneath Beach Bluff Terrace, how they were located as well. This project has no wetland impacts necessary nor proposed. And then the only other detail was that the, due to the presence of the stream, and I did way back when I worked with Peter on the property in the front, I did have a DEP staffer come out and review the drainage feature to make sure that it did in fact meet standards for Natural Resource Protection Act inclusion, and it did. And as such, the activity for the disturbance of the area for lawn apron around the proposed dwelling, we will need to obtain a DEP Natural Resources Protection Act permit by rule, which you folks may be familiar with, is the abbreviated 14-day turnaround time. It's a notification that we'll send. That too will be submitted, and we'll make that submission and make a copy available to the board sometime between now and either the sidewalk or the very next planning board meeting, one or the other. Okay? That's about all I have.
So I will add just one thing. The, Maureen had indicated in the memo that it might be wise to expand on the buffer area and right in this corner here for the wetland impact. We do have the 40-foot setback that we're proposing here to the stream, as Jim had indicated, was, is a, would be approved through the DEP potentially under their NRPA rules, so that would be something we would accomplish and then bring to you with that, with those approvals. We would be okay with providing some additional width on this corner right here to give a little bit of extra buffer to that wetland area where we're not showing it now. I think we can kind of, we do need to have separation requirements from the leach bed to the building and all that, so we'll, but we'll work on adjusting that site plan to provide some additional buffer there to the extent that we think we can, so. With that, I'd be happy to turn it back over to the board and answer your questions.
Thank you. So, go ahead, Joe.
So, yeah, I had a question about that, so the 40-foot stream setback, that's something you haven't got yet.
Right.
Hasn't been approved.
Yeah, that's what we felt was reasonable in the circumstance and what we're applying for through the DEP, which is not yet.
So can you like really briefly explain the criteria that they use to grant that?
If I may, the permit by rule form that we will send the DEP to make notification to them of this need technically would allow us to get as close as 25 feet to the stream. We're not asking for that. We recognize that we.
But you're reducing it from 70?
75 to 40, which is more than still, not quite half, or we're not asking for even a 50% reduction. The process by which you undergo a permit by rule, it's a one-page form. You do need to justify to the DEP why we're doing it. Part of that justification is that this is a lot of record that has had a tax bill associated with it for years and so forth. This is not a newly proposed or created lot, though we do need to be before you to get access to it. DEP, commonly with a construction like this, will allow, and I've had various different iterations with the DEP, but it's generally 20 to 25 feet of apron, lawn apron that they would allow for around a dwelling, and in terms of a reduction like this to a stream or a wetland of special significance, if that's what it was. Again, we need to justify why we're doing it. We, you just can't say you want more lawn. We look for some 15 to 20 feet of lawn apron around the dwelling for stability, for the ability to put machinery around it and so forth, and ask no more than that. DEP has 14 days from the date of submission to respond to the request, and either we get no response whatsoever, and that is our approval. If 14 days go by with no response from DEP, then in effect is the approval. It's the only, it's an unusual situation. It's the only time you don't officially get a response back from DEP on a letterhead. You get the form, code office will get the permit by rule form with initial at the bottom, and that's their sign-off, okay?
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
So, we appreciate you guys actually asking permission to do something like that, because from what you might have heard earlier, there was an applicant who had moved into a place with somebody who just did whatever they want and went over RP2, so we appreciate you guys going out.
Yeah.
My question is, looking at the plans, it looks as if there's this sort of, at the end of Beach Bluff Terrace, it's sort of the proposed 30-foot right-of-way goes beyond the end of that road, according to the map. I don't know if you're seeing what I'm seeing.
So, in that little.
Yeah, like beach bluff terrace.
Back snap where it's colored in red.
That, and also at the interior looks like, so Beach Bluff Terrace was all the way to this property line?
Correct.
And you guys won't have a problem with, it's not a satellite map, so I can't actually see what's there besides what's on this paper, but there is a road, the road extends.
Correct.
Although, okay. But, and that is actually considered Beach Bluff Terrace? It's not considered part of the other parcel that goes sort of around that whole property?
It's. I think, I mean, we had, we had it surveyed by Netto Land Survey. Initially, the tax maps showed something a little bit differently, but that's why we get it surveyed and get that information, so that was what they discovered through their surveying efforts at the road extended to the end of the parcel.
Yeah, so looking at the property map that Joe was just referring, it looks like the property that's parcel number two on, we don't have map U9, this is map U10, but it does look like the owner of that parcel on, it's building number two and U09, owns that area where you're proposing your easement. So just as long as you're aware of that and make sure that that's all well and good as opposed to somebody who owns that property, I think that's Robinson property, comes and says, hey, you guys are on our property, so.
Yep. Alright, thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
So, the Thompson Road gets split in two, right? And half of, the top half goes to parcel B in the bottom, half goes to parcel A?
Right, so that's what happened through the vacation, and I think as.
So, the survey, would you update this to reflect that?
Right, and we would be conveying the 50% portion that's currently with parcel A, we'd just get conveyed to parcel B.
So that's what that number 4392 reflects?
Yes.
Any other questions? Thanks for asking that, Joe, because I was going to ask about that.
One question?
Go ahead.
You may have already covered it, but I just want to make sure. It says no wetland report was provided as support for the wetland boundaries, and.
That is the case prior to today. We, I do have a report that I solicited from the state soil scientist, and it does refer to methodology, and that will, I think, suffice. That will be submitted in between now and the next meeting.
Thank you. And same with the subsurface wastewater system?
Yes, and in septic system design, I have a copy of it here, but I did not, for insufficient copies, I didn't think necessarily it would be appropriate to drop it on the table tonight, but it has been prepared, it is signed, and it is ready to go.
Thank you. Anything over on the side? You guys good? Should I open it up to the public? You guys good? This time I'd like to open this up for public comment on completeness of this package. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the completeness of this? Seeing no one, I'm closing the public comment period. Alright. So are we, are we good to go? Are we ready to make a decision on completeness of this?
I have a motion.
Go right ahead.
Alright, motion for completeness, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Peter Ware for a private accessway to create access to a lot located at the rear of 69 Beach Bluff Terrace be deemed complete.
I'll second that. Alright, and moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous? Alright. Next order of business would be a sidewalk. What else is, what are people doing on December 3rd? No. From, let's see, 11 to, I don't know, I'm teasing, but whatever.
Well, we can continue to bond that day.
I don't think we'll be talking to each other, but.
Bring us sleep.
I'm assuming, I guess my, I'm making the assumption that people want a sidewalk, so. I'm making that assumption here. So, I, I mean, some of the questions that have been asked, I mean Jonathan's questions about looking at the tax map and the little jog in the tax map related to how it's actually laid out would indicate that there's a question, but.
Well, my only question was for them, just to make sure that they cross their t's and dot their i's, otherwise it's going to be basic litigation, so it was more just friendly, be aware of them, so.
So, one reason to do a sidewalk, I noticed like this next property, it has same owner front and back, and I would imagine that goes on down towards.
There's probably half a dozen probably others where that.
So, it means that this could keep happening.
Oh, yes.
Right, so it might be good for us to get a sense of what that potential is like.
Didn't we look at this 10 years ago?
No. Well, if we did, I didn't look at it with you.
Yeah, but it went across the yard at that time or something like that.
I remember looking at Thompson Road when we vacated it.
Yeah.
And I remember specifically this property at the end of the road.
I believe you walked in on the other side. You walked from the front of Thompson Road where it connects with Shore Road. I don't think you ever made it down this far. Sorry.
We only vacated half of Thompson Road, the back half, right? The front half.
The front half was preserved. Yeah, it was extended.
This has wetlands associated, kind of in the margin. I think we ought to have a sidewalk.
So, okay. So, when?
10:30?
You think that's enough time?
I don't think we can make it by 10:30.
I mean, that'd be enough time.
No, because we're going to walk up that road.
You've got a long walk from where you're parking.
Hold it on a weekday, I know I can't make it, but I don't want to hold the board down. Do you want to do it first thing in the morning or end of the day?
I'm looking at you guys.
I'm okay with a weekday.
This could be quick, I think.
I don't think it's quick.
This sun could be slow.
You want to do it next week during first thing in the morning?
I could do that, I just can't do the 27th or 28th.
Can you do it on the 29th?
I can't do it Tuesday or Thursday.
I can do the 29th.
29th is a Wednesday.
And I can't do a Wednesday. Well, I have to be done by nine o'clock. I have to be.
We'll be done by nine, I have to be done by 8:30.
Okay.
You want to do it 7:30 on the 29th?
Sure, I can do that.
Yep.
Wednesday, November 29th at 7:30 a.m.
And we can just. One thing we're going to want to be careful with at that time is school buses and kids on the street. I don't know how busy a street Beach Bluff Terrace is, but I know there are kids who live on the street, so just be careful, and I'm assuming we'll park at the end. Alright.
I'm sorry, what time was it?
7:30. I will send an email out to all of you listing these, and then I'll also go on the town's calendar.
I'm shocked you didn't want to do it on Sunday, the 3rd. We can just spend the day together, so.
Jim's getting donuts.
Jim's going to. Alright, do I get to have another motion?
I'll make it.
Go right ahead.
Motion to table, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Peter Ware for a private accessway to create access to a lot located at the rear of 69 Beach Bluff Terrace be tabled to the regular December 19th, 2017 meeting of the planning board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Second, thank you, Victoria. Alright, all those in favor? Alright, it's unanimous? Great, thank you.
Very much.
Next item on the agenda is Sprague Solar Farm Resource Protection Permit. The Sprague Corporation is requesting a resource protection permit to alter 400 square feet of RP2 wetland to install underground electrical utilities for a solar farm to be installed at 95 Bowery Beach Road. Section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Permit, completeness and public hearing will be held tonight. We'll start with completeness. Go right ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Seth Sprague, I'm president of Sprague Corporation, the landowner and applicant, and I have with me tonight Dale Brewer. landowner and applicant, and I have with me tonight Dale Brewer of Statewide Surveys, who provided our wetland mapping and the wetland report, and John Green, the Sprague Corp property manager. And the project which we're applying, the permit applies to is a community solar farm off Fowler Road near Greenspark Farm, and it consists of eight poles, 11 feet high each, on which sit solar panels, and the plan is to trench from these solar panels underground to a new utility pole that we're installing and that will then connect to the grid across Fowler Road. And we need the RP Resource Protection Permit because there are two sections of wetlands that we need to tunnel through. As far as completeness of our application goes, we are requesting one waiver for the stormwater runoff plan provided by a professional engineer. The area of the disturbance that we're talking about is 400 square feet and, which is so small as to make stormwater runoff plan be really impractical. We also have a partial submission under the heading of the abutters list. We've provided the names, locations of 20 abutters along Fowler Road. This site is about half an acre within a 340-acre site that encompasses the entire surroundings of Great Pond, and so there are another 46 approximately abutters beyond the 20 that we've provided you with, but they're quite some distance away, and they didn't seem to be quite relevant to the topic at hand here. So there are two items on completeness. If I could just go right ahead and finish the other comments I had about the actual-
Go right ahead.
Permit request. What we're looking at for disturbance is really very minor. We're talking about being able to create a trench eight inches wide and 24 inches deep across 52 linear feet of RP2 wetland, and beyond that, we've allowed extra space for the trenching equipment. And so crossing number one, that's near Fowler Road, is 22 foot long and eight foot wide. Crossing number two down here between this upland, these two uplands here, is 30 feet long and four feet wide, and for good measure, we've added another two foot of width on those areas to create a total of 400 square feet. So the entire, the entire site here where the poles are is an agricultural field that we've been plowing, digging up, otherwise disturbing for a long time, and before we owned this property, the Jordans were doing the same things to this field, but, and we can, we plan to continue to be able to use this field for agricultural purposes. That's one of the reasons why we're doing the elevated poles rather than the ground-mounted poles, so that we can, we can still use the field. But since what we're trying to do here is create an electrical service underground, we're required to get the permit for that purpose. And once the conduit is in the ground, we intend to refill the trench, replant the soil that's disturbed, and when the project is finished, there won't be any evidence that we ever disturbed the wetland. Nothing is being built or being left in, in, in the wetland on the surface. And finally, the reason that we're going to the trouble of getting this permit is that we think that this trenching underground, even though we're going to be disturbing temporarily the surface of the wetland, is really the best way for us to complete this project, because if we are not able to get the permit, our plan B is to have the electrical service come out of the ground on the boundaries of the wetland and erect poles on which we would have to suspend the electrical service over the wetland in these two different places. And in the future, we think that any maintenance issues that might arise with those overhead cables would pose a potential damage through the work that would have to go on in the RP2 zone, so we think that this is the best way of protecting the RP2 in the, over the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? At this, at this point, I will open, open the floor for public comment regarding the completeness of this application. Would anyone, does anyone wish to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment period and move it back to the board for action or comment. Okay? Action.
Got a motion for the board to consider?
Yes.
Motion for completeness be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the Sprague Corporation for a resource protection permit to disturb up to 400 square feet of RP2 wetland to install underground electrical service for a solar farm to be located at 334 Fowler Road be deemed complete.
Joe seconds. Any, any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous? All right, step one. Our next step is public hearing on this project regarding the substance of the project. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we can move on to the board's questions, substantive questions regarding this project. Are there any?
I don't have actually a question, I just have a, we, the board did receive an email from, I believe, an abutter, I forget the name of the farm, that was right next door, but they were in favor of this project, and we did spend an extensive amount of time at the workshop going over the details about what was proposed, and we got a very adequate education about what these solar panels are going to do, how much, how efficient they are, so I'm completely satisfied with the presentation and the application that's been given to us.
I believe the abutting farm is one of the participants in your community power group, is it hot? Greenspark?
Yes.
Go ahead, Joe.
I don't know if you've all seen it, it's all installed, it looks good, you know, from an engineering, you know, nerd engineer, it looks good.
All right. Anything else? Someone feel like reading?
Feel free.
Go right ahead, Jonathan.
Motion for approval, findings of fact, the Sprague Corporation is requesting a resource protection permit to disturb up to 400 square feet of RP2 wetland to install underground electrical service for a solar farm to be located at 334 Fowler Road, which requires review under section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. The proposed, number two, the proposed underground electrical installation will not material obstruct the flow of surface or subsurface waters across or from the alteration area. Three, the proposed underground electrical installation will not impound surface waters or reduce the absorptive capacity of the alteration area so as to cause or increase the flooding of adjacent properties. Four, the proposed underground electrical installation will not increase the flow of surface waters across or the discharge of surface waters from the alteration area so as to threaten injury to the alteration area or to upstream and/or downstream lands by flooding, creating erosion, sedimentation, or otherwise. Five, the proposed underground electrical installation will not result in significant damage to spawning grounds or habitats for aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife. Six, the proposed underground electrical installation will not pose problems related to the support of structures. Seven, the proposed underground electrical installation will not be detrimental to aquifer recharge or the quantity or quality of groundwater. Eight, the proposed underground electrical installation will not disturb coastal dunes or continuous back dune areas. Number nine, the proposed underground electrical installation will not, excuse me, will maintain or improve ecological and aesthetic values. Number 10, the underground electrical installation is located in the wetland and no construction of structures upland of the wetland is proposed, so no buffer is needed. Eleven, the area disturbed during underground electrical installation will not be mulched with hay and then, excuse me, will be mulched with hay and then planted with an orchard grass and clover mix in the spring. Number 12, the underground electrical installation will be accomplished without discharging wastewater from buildings or from other construction into wastewater treatment facilities in violation of section 15-1-4 of the sewage ordinance. And 13, the underground electrical installation is not located in a flood plain. And finally, number 14, the application substantially complies with section 19-8-3 of the Resource Protection Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the Sprague Corporation for a resource protection permit to disturb up to 400 square feet of RP2 wetland to install underground electrical service for a solar farm to be located at 334 Fowler Road be approved.
Okay, been moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Good thing you came early, right?
Yeah. You get to watch all the fun.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah, another motion. Okay, moved and seconded that we adjourned.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All those in favor?